We good? Is he ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our forum tonight sponsored by the Shaker Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Cleveland Chapter. Thank you. I'm Merrill Simon, Chapter Chair. Tonight, our topics are the candidates for Shaker Heights School Board, followed by a presentation from the Shaker Schools about the operating levy on the November ballot. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, which means we do not support candidates or political parties. We are devoted to educating voters. We work for informed and active participation in government and good government policies. On the literature table outside the auditorium, you can pick up League materials, election information, and vote by mail applications. In addition, important election information is online at vote411.org. Please consider supporting the League and these programs with a donation. You can donate on our website or by following the QR code on the screen at the end of our night. Before introducing tonight's moderator, a quick review of the rules. We ask candidates and their supporters to refrain from wearing partisan items such as campaign buttons inside this room. Campaign materials can be placed on the literature table outside the auditorium. Each candidate must appear in person and at the time slotted for their race. No stand-ins are permitted. Each candidate will have equal time for opening statements, responses to questions, and a final closing statement. Time limits will be strictly enforced. Our timer will give candidates warnings at 30 and 15 seconds and a signal when their time is up. And we suggest that the candidates address the audience, not each other. Our audience may pose questions in writing. Audience questions are reviewed by a committee for legibility, civil discourse, and to group and diversify topics before handing them to the moderator to pose to the panelists as time permits. We have volunteers distributing cards for your questions. If you have a question, raise the card in the air and we will have somebody come and pick it up. Or if you need a card, put your hand up, we'll have somebody bring you one. You can also email your questions tonight to shakerheights@lwvgreatercleveland.org, and that will be up on the board in a minute. Filming is not allowed in this room, except for our official videographer, and no one is permitted to post partial or edited clips of what happens during tonight's forum. Right now, I ask that everybody silence or turn off their cellphones. We ask that the audience remain silent so that we can hear all statements, questions, and responses, and anyone creating a disruption will be asked to leave. We have a limited amount of time tonight, and we want to make it useful for all. I'd like to introduce the moderator for this evening. Oh, here's Meredith, you wanna... I'm going to introduce Councilwoman, Cuyahoga County Councilwoman Meredith Turner.
I'm leaving an elected officials forum in Ward One, where we were just talking about our official duties. So not running for office, but just being an elected. So, good evening, everyone. I'm honored to bring greetings on behalf of our chapter president, Terracita Jones Thomas, and the Greater Cleveland Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, founded January 13, 1913 by 22 visionary collegiate women on the campus of Howard University. Delta Sigma Theta has been committed to sisterhood, scholarship service, and social action for more than a century. Education has always been at the heart of our mission because learning is the foundation for leadership and lasting change. As an educator, a graduate of Shaker Heights High School, and your Cuyahoga County Council Representative for District Nine, I know deeply how our schools shape who we become. I still live right here in the Ludlow-Anaway area, and I take great pride in seeing our community invest in the next generation. Before joining council, I spent nearly a decade working for U.S. Senator Sherrod Brown, and I learned that when we invest in education, we're not just building better schools, we're building stronger families, safer communities, and a brighter future for everyone. So on behalf of my president, Jones Thomas, and the Women of Delta Sigma Theta, thank you for showing up, staying engaged, and for believing in the power of education to transform lives. Look at what it did for me. Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening, Wendy Doring, is Chair of the League's Cleveland Heights Chapter and a veteran moderator. In full disclosure, she currently lives in the Shaker Square area of the Shaker School District, although her community involvement remains in Cleveland Heights. Please join me in welcoming Wendy.
In full disclosure, that's Cleveland Heights and University Heights. Poor University Heights keeps getting overlooked. Tonight's forum is for voters to hear from and learn about the candidates for the school board. It is not a debate. The League forum is for the expression of views and exchange of information upon which our democracy depends. A bit of background about the role they are seeking. School board members serve a four-year term. Three seats are coming open, but the other two seats will expire in two years. There are six candidates seeking the three seats. Board members supervise two employees, the superintendent and the school treasurer. Board members are eligible for a $125 stipend per meeting, but the board members oversee an annual expenditure of about $124 million. It's clearly not going to the board. School board members do not have wards or neighborhoods; they each serve the community at large. The school district includes all of municipal Shaker Heights, plus a portion of the city of Cleveland around Shaker Square. Board members generally have two board meetings or work sessions, plus committee meetings each month. We have asked each candidate to prepare a two-minute opening statement describing their training, how they view the job of the school board, and how their skills are relevant. The candidates drew lots to determine the speaking order for tonight, and first up will be Mr. Dreyfus Wells.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to be here because I'm so excited about the potential of our children in Shaker Heights. Thank you so much to the League for all you do for good governance in our community. Thank you to the elected officials for your service, the ones who are here tonight and the ones who are at home, and thank you to our audience. Your interest and engagement in our schools is so important. My name is Kevin Dreyfus Wells. I have lived with my family on Ludlow Road. We moved here 17 years ago when our son was starting kindergarten at Anaway, and he had just amazing experiences all the way through graduation. My wife grew up here as well. She graduated from Shaker Heights High School. I did not. My wife and my son are never at a loss to remind me of the superiority of my education, and they're absolutely right. I could not have dreamed of the opportunities and the rich experience, both in the schools and out of schools, that Shaker offers to a young child and a teenager. That's why I'm running. I believe our schools and our community are mutually dependent on each other, and I want both to succeed wildly. In my professional life, I am an architect. My work involves the restoration of historic buildings, including the one that we're in today, this auditorium space, as well as new construction mixed-use housing like the Arcadia project that's on Warrensville Road. However, for the first two years of my career, I was a U.S. Peace Corps volunteer. I was a teacher. That doesn't make me an educational expert, but it does give me a very deep appreciation for the hard work our teachers do and the potential our children can have when we push them and challenge them and support them, just they can do amazing, surprising things. That experience was the start of a commitment to public service that's continued ever since in nonprofit communities or organizations, in our city and school organizations like the City Planning and Zoning Commission. In all that experience, what I've learned is just a simple truth, that our government is better when the people that are affected by decisions are part of that decision process, and I look forward to our discussion.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Stedman, please.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us and to all of you being here on this gorgeous fall evening. I'm Jenny Stedman. My career has been all about connection and trust. I worked in public relations at the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame and Museum here in Cleveland, celebrating creativity and collaboration. I built an online publication for families with young kids, helping them engage with each other and the local community. I've been a trainer and a community leader at a local gym, helping people reach their goals, feel supported every step of the way, and I'm an organizer and an advocate for a local group that fights extremism. No matter what the job, my focus has always been about the people, listening, communicating, bringing folks together around a shared purpose, and that's exactly what I hope to do on the board. I want to rebuild trust and transparency between the board and our community. Families deserve to know what's happening in our schools and to feel confident that their voice matters, and we can't solve challenges if we aren't truly communicating. And let's be honest, the public education is facing real challenges. Decisions are being made in Columbus and in Washington that do not reflect our morals here in Shaker and what's best for our kids. Everything from funding cuts, the common sense gun laws are making it harder for our teachers to teach and our families to feel secure. My husband and I moved to Shaker 17 years ago. We have a senior and a sophomore. They've both been to Shaker their entire careers, and through them, I've seen firsthand what a supportive, connected community can do to help children grow, not just academically, but as confident, caring people, ready to take on the world. I'm running to be a strong local voice for Shaker families, someone who will protect the progress we've made and stand up for our students and our staff when outside forces threaten to undermine them. Shaker has always led the way in inclusion, innovation, and excellence, and I want us to keep the focus on where it belongs, on kids, on classrooms, and on the community. Thank you.
Ms. Nelson, please.
I want to thank the League and my colleagues up here for an engaging and collaborative race. My name is Kate Nielsen. I'm a graduate of 2002 from Shaker, with some of you or your children. After graduating, I moved to Maine, and then Michigan and DC. And then my husband and I decided to move back here to raise our family here. We have a first grader at Anaway, and our little kiddo is in the inaugural class at Ludlow. Deciding whether to send our kid to Ludlow was part of what inspired me to run. When we first considered it, there was no summer program lined up. For working families, coming up with care for three months, when most summer camps don't serve kids under five, was kind of a nonstarter. So I worked with Champions to make sure that there was a summer option, and that enabled us to take advantage of this great new resource. I think it's important to have a parent of young kids on the board, to bring that perspective and to think through the ways that our schools need to be responsive to families to best serve them and to really fully deliver on our promises. I'm also an attorney and a policy advocate. With so many mandates coming out of Columbus and DC, these skills would serve the district well, as we navigate the policies that impact our schools while working to uphold Shaker values. Looking forward, my priorities are ensuring that, number one, the pre-K program is successful and accessible to all families, which can shrink the achievement gap and lead to eventual cost savings. Two, our teachers feel supported and have the resources to successfully teach students in a detract environment. Three, all students feel a sense of safety and belonging and can reach their full potential. And four, that the district successfully communicates with multiple stakeholders, including about shortcomings and areas for improvement. To achieve these goals, the board must support the administration while holding the superintendent and treasurer accountable. I strongly support passage of the levy to deliver equitable and enriching learning environments, and I'll ask the tough questions to ensure the trade-offs that are inherent to making budgetary decisions reflect the priorities of our community. I'll do this by listening to students, to families, and to teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
Okay. You asked me. Okay. So I'm Ardeilia Holmes. I am a mother in this district. I have four children in this district. I'm also an entrepreneur, strategist, and I recently, through alternative pathways, have accepted a job as an eighth-grade math teacher. I am running for this board because I'm not a politician. I'm actually really bad at it. I forgot to have my things at the door like I always do, and all my colleagues literally laugh at me because I'm just trying to be here to represent the side of the story that doesn't get hurt. We speak a lot about our community, but the truth is, and you could look at any Reddit forum or maybe in some of our private conversations and realize that it does sometimes seem like there are two Shakers running simultaneously. I am here to represent the other side, the side that gets talked about but doesn't ever really have a lot of representation. That is very important for our community to thrive and for our schools to thrive. We have to come together and be one. We can no longer operate the way that we have operated. I also believe that equity is the biggest return on investment for our schools and for our communities. Multiple studies have been done, and they show that when children are not being properly taught, it doesn't matter demographic, their path to a hard life is pretty much cemented right there. I want to make sure that all of our students have amazing opportunities. I want to make sure that all of our students walk into our buildings and feel amazing. I want to restore the sense of community that some of our community members don't feel. I am all about accountability, all about transparency, and all about equity. I truly believe that the most important and pivotal time in our generation is right now, and education is the place where that starts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cover.
Good evening, and thank you, League, for the opportunity to be here. My name is Laura Cover, and I am running for reelection. For more than 25 years, I've devoted my career to education as a classroom teacher, a senior leader in national and local organizations, and the chief talent officer for Cleveland Schools, and as the founder of a firm that helps schools and nonprofits build strong HR and people systems. For the past four years, I've had the privilege of serving on the board and the last two as the board president. I bring that experience, perspective, and commitment to this race. I'm proud of what we've accomplished together. We launched the largest facilities modernization project in district history. We expanded pre-K access so that more families can ensure their children are kindergarten-ready. We moved fifth graders to elementary schools to decrease the number of transitions for our kids, and we implemented a district-wide phones-away-for-the-day policy that is already helping students focus on learning and relationships. And we also know our work is not done. Together, I want us to continue to keep excellence and equity at the center of our work as we continue to implement detract classrooms, so every student, regardless of background, has access to rigorous and engaging coursework. It means using meaningful data to hold ourselves accountable to progress, and it means ensuring our teachers and staff have the resources and training they need to support students academically, socially, and emotionally. Finally, it means passing Issue 51, our operating levy. I want to be clear, without the levy, we will face cuts: larger class sizes, fewer course offerings, fewer extracurriculars, and staff reductions. That would hurt not only our students, but our city as a whole. Strong schools drive a strong Shaker community. I'm running for reelection because I believe in Shaker. I believe in our educators and our community, and I believe in every single student in the district. Thank you.
And Mr. Reed.
Good evening. My name is James Reed. I have been all through this community in the last few months, and I've always started out with the way I'm going to start out today. I am the answer to the trivia question. I have a...I am the only person who graduated from this high school who has also served as principal at this high school. I have been in Shaker for 62 years in the most historic district that we have, Ludlow, the experimental Ludlow, the place where we were told that you could buy a house in an area that was closed to you. My parents moved here in 1960. I have also been the principal at Cleveland Heights High School. I served as principal at Cleveland Heights High School and as an administrator for 15 years. I was a middle school teacher for 11 years in Cleveland Heights. I came to Shaker in 1516 as principal. The day that I retired from Cleveland Heights, I left here and went to Beechwood. I served as the Beechwood High School principal for a year. I left Beechwood at the end of that year and went to St. Edward High School for two more years. I also then served as a principal in Cleveland's Municipal District, a place called Campus International, which was an IB school that was really equity for everyone. I also, in fact, served as the building administrator at Chardon High School. The point that I'm trying to make to you is, I am the only person sitting here today who has had to put those strategic plans into the hallways of diverse high schools, of small high schools, of public high schools, of private high schools. I think that I have a unique voice for the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now to the questions. Please remember to raise your hand if you want a card or if you have a card to be picked up, and I will ask you to please refrain from your applause because it just takes away time, and we are short on time here tonight. For the question-and-answer period, I remind the candidates to please stay within the allotted time of one minute or less. You are not obliged to talk for the full minute if you don't have more to say. The League prepared several questions, which we will be starting with, and then we will turn to the questions from the audience. My usual method is the first question starts with the first person, and I go down the table. Second question starts with the second person, and so on, so you know when you're going to be up first or up last, and, God willing, I will keep the order straight. I will also remind you that there are three questions that were posted in the Vote 411, which the candidates have already answered, so I will try to stay away from those questions this evening. Mr. Dreyfus Wells. What is the board's role, and how will you find a balance between board oversight and that of the district's professionals?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that a bit?
What is the board's role, and how will you find a balance between the board oversight role and that of the district's professionals?
I apologize. I'm having a hard time with the sound system with some reverberation.
There's a lot of reverb here.
What is the board's role, and...
And the balance between the board's role and the role of the district's professionals.
Yes, thank you. The role of the board is fairly straightforward. The board will supervise the superintendent and the treasurer, and the board provides the direction and vision for the district. The board is responsible to set that vision and provide that guidance, responsible for the what, not the how. I also want to point out that the board's role is an elected position, so it's a representative position, that we have to represent the community. It's a two-way conversation. Related to our district professionals, we have to find ways to hear from them and support them, but we are not there to manage them. But I think there's a lot of wisdom that can come from our teachers' and ground-level experiences with students, so I think it's very important that there is an interaction with our district professionals. But at the end of the day, our job is to hold the administration accountable to the performance that we set in our vision.
Thank you.
And it's... Thank you. In addition to supervising the superintendent and the treasurer, I also see the board is set to... Let me start that over. But we're also set policy around the morals of the community, you know, protecting speech, protecting the curriculum, embracing...having policies that embrace all races, all genders, all faiths, and to support the hard-working teachers and the staff, and to ensure that the policies see our morals, ensure our policies support the morals of the community as a whole, and creating some kind of two-way conversation with the administration, whether it's through the superintendent or some other avenues that we can come up with together, is something that I hope to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen.
The role of the board is to supervise the superintendent and the treasurer, and I see that as, if you think about any other managerial relationship, that means offering support, also means offering accountability, making sure you get that balance right. I think that the role of the board is to know the weeds but not be in the weeds and get that balance right, and to hear from the community. As was said, to make sure that, as elected representatives, we know what's going on, we're hearing complaints, we're hearing things that are going well, and we're balancing among that and those statements what is an individual problem that might need some help or direction and guidance, and what's a systemic issue that needs to be addressed as a broader issue with deeper answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
Yes, like all of my colleagues have said, of course, the board's role is to supervise the administrator, right, administration and the treasurer, but I truly believe... I truly believe that our number-one goal is to hear our community and to represent what's best for our community and our students, putting those voices first, hearing the whole ecosystem. I believe in having tight communication with our teachers, even though that's more an administration thing. I think making sure that their voices are being heard as a part of that oversight is important. Making sure our students are feeling heard as a part of that oversight is important. The one part of the community that kind of gets left out, though, is the part of the community who do not have children in this district. They need to be pulled into this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is one of those questions that, four years ago, I thought I understood the answer, and I've learned a lot over the last four years. Absolutely. The board's role is to set policy and vision, to have oversight over the superintendent and treasurer, and to engage the community, but what that really looked like took me a bit to fully get my head around, because particularly oversight, after being a manager of large teams, can be pretty confusing. And what it ended up turning into was that we created goals that we use to hold the district accountable, as well as ourselves accountable, in terms of thinking about the policies that we actually have control over, that we're certainly not making decisions on every policy that's happening in every building, but we did think about the cellphone policy, the safety and security. And in terms of engaging the community, it is incredibly important that we are both out, hearing what's on the minds of our community members, but then also following up when we hear the suggestions they have for us. Thank you.
I have worked with many boards in my almost 24, 25 years with an education. I have, I have worked with many boards in my almost 24, 25 years with an education. And I understand that the role of a board is theoretically to support the superintendent and the treasurer and the policies that they would like. But I also think this, and I think that the role that I see for myself is that there have never, on those boards that I just told you about, I have never had a principal or someone who was involved in the teaching profession. They might have done it as a short-term kind of situation, but as a career, no one had done that. I think that the thing that I would say going into this board is to be able to prick some of the ideas of the folks who are running the schools and say, does that work in the hallways in the community?
Thank you very much. Ms. Stedman. Please identify one of the district's challenges imposed by forces outside of Shaker Heights and how you think the board should address that challenge.
I mean, one of the largest challenges in our world and in our community right now is social, emotional well-being. And that is something that is upon our community as much as it is everywhere else. It requires personnel. Personnel requires funding, making sure our kids are safe, not just physically, but also mentally. In our schools, kids who don't feel safe don't learn. They have a hard time learning. They have a hard time getting to school. They have a hard time going home. It can be debilitating in all ways. And we live in a world that can be pretty scary nowadays, and school is not always feels like the safest space. And that's not because of what Shaker is doing. That is a world that has currently been created for our children. So that's definitely going to be one of my largest focuses, is making sure our children have a place that they can come and feel safe and learn as they need to.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen.
As a policy wonk, I have to talk about policies that are coming out of Columbus and Washington DC and their impacts. And that has to do with both funding as well as other cuts and policies that drive the direction of our schools. And I think that this is an important place for the community to stand up and the board to engage, but that can look like a lot of different things. I think there's ways to engage with policies that you don't like through, as, in optics and how it looks like you respond, through understanding the consequences and weighing what it looks like to not take up the policy or to fulfill it in your own unique and creative way. And then also how you actually implement it in the schools, and what's the guidance that you give to comply or to not comply with it. And I think that it's really important for us as a community to weigh the pros and cons of how we face down the policies coming out of Columbus and DC.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
Yes, I agree with both Jenny and Kate. I also believe too, just to touch on those, with social well-being, we just live in a different generation. It was important for me to have a voice and be represented here because I am, no shade, a little bit closer to the kids. I spend a lot of time talking to the students, so we're a little closer in age, so I kind of understand some of the challenges they are facing. With everything that's kind of going on in DC and with our state, it's just a different atmosphere. We want to protect our community against crime. We want to protect the prestige and the beauty of our community. That's where social well-being plays a big part. You know, like Kate said, we could do what we can to try to be heard at a state and federal level. I think for me, it is always important here, outside the district, to, I mean, inside the district, to consider the things that are happening outside of the district, consider that values have changed and traditions have changed.
I have a hard time coming up with one of what our biggest challenge is. I do think that, we've talked about a few of them already. One of the things that's really on my mind is to what extent us as a society is fractured. We are seeing this in national politics, and then we see it actually happen here at home, too. And I think that does affect our students. That is affecting their social and emotional health. It is affecting what we are modeling for them in terms of how they are showing up to their classes. And I'm always so impressed by our students and their ability to talk across lines of difference, to talk about things when they actually disagree. And it's something that actually I think that we could be learning from. But as I continue to be out in the community, what I'm seeing is just a lot of anger and anxiety. And as we think about what it's going to take to help our schools, we actually need to come together in a real way.
Thank you. We have a request from our audiovisual person to move your microphones closer. He's raising, trying to raise the volume. He'd like all of you to move your microphones closer. Thank you. Go ahead.
I really do think that my view from all of the schools that I told you about, I always use this barometer for myself. When I would go to a school, I would walk through the halls all the time and look at the Hall of Fame. Most high schools, middle schools have Halls of Fame. And I was always struck by the amount of folks who were on that plaque. When I was at Chardon, for example, there were seven people on that plaque, a school of 1,100 that has been in existence for quite a while. And the last person they put in was in the 80s. When you go to the hallway in front of the front office, there are 200 folks in there, Pulitzer Prize winners, doctors, lawyers, executives, people in all sorts of leadership roles in this country. The most important thing is that we continue to offer a rigorous education for Shaker students.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus Wells.
The adage that your greatest strength is your greatest weakness is, I think, often holds true, and I think for us, we have a tremendous strength in the diversity of our student body and the range of backgrounds and interests and experiences they represent. It's a really difficult job to serve every one of those students in a way that really challenges and supports them, whatever their range of needs are. We took a very bold step five years ago with the tracking and de-leveling. I think there's a lot of places where that helps with that challenge of that diverse student body, but it also has created some of its own challenges. And we're still in the process of kind of figuring out where we are with that, and that's something I'm sure we'll talk about a little bit more later. But as we address that student body of such diverse needs, we also have to make sure that we're doing it in a way that this community that's got a residential tax base can support, that we're giving them the resources to succeed in that for the long term for every student.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen. Regarding safety in the schools, what additional interventions might be put into place to address the behavior needs of the students to ensure that the district remains safe for all children within the district beyond simply applying suspensions, which result in high absenteeism and truancy rates? Do you have any other suggestions for, to address safety concerns?
The question was policies around safety as opposed to?
What can be done beyond suspensions?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I think it's very important to go beyond suspensions for exactly what you said, so kids aren't missing time. I think at the end of the day, we are safest if kids feel a sense of belonging in our schools. They'll be more engaged, they'll be happier, they'll be less likely to be sort of a lone wolf. So putting policies in place that support that. I spoke with Chief Hudson, Police Department, just yesterday or the day before, about how we can partner and do community engagement and make sure that kids, that all of the adults in our school are learning about the kids and what they need, learning what makes them tick, what turns them off. And through those ways, through relationship building, I think we can make this a better and a safer school for all students. I think that that enables adults to be responsive, and it cuts out some of the problem from the beginning to make sure that kids are engaged, so they're not missing classes, so they're not being disruptive. And so they're ultimately getting a better education themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
Yes, this is one of my favorite ones. So I think suspensions with that, they're very disproportionate in our district. So I actually comment to question, are we using PBIS? PBIS. So I think we should maybe explore other programs for behavior management or perhaps the way that we are implementing it to make sure that it is equitable. When it comes to safety for me, when I look at the lens of things even outside of the district, I have brought up multiple times that I would like to have more than locked doors in our elementary schools. I don't know what that looks like because I understand there are children, and we don't want the police at the school, I don't know. But we do need to do something to make sure they're safe. I've served as a lunch monitor. It was not safe. I also would encourage more safety measures and trauma-informed training, if possible, for our paraprofessionals and our security guards, so we could work towards de-escalation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
I live up South Woodland and will hear sirens going down South Woodland and get nervous every single time I hear them. We have spent a number of hours and resources in terms of thinking about the safety and security of our kids, including adding counselors into our buildings, including thinking about the cell phone policy, including safety and security protocols in all of our buildings, including metal detectors here in the high school, and continuing to expand our family engagement plans. And we know that we need to stay at it. This is an ever-evolving space. And so continuing to think about the social, emotional learning of our students, the buildings that we are working to build right now will have additional safety features, but it is not just a district question. This is a question for us as an entire community. If we want to be able to fully put our arms around our students, we need to do that together.
Thank you.
I will tell you that I checked book bags and ran students through our metal detectors when I was the principal at Campus International High School every single morning. And the juxtaposition for me was when I left there and became the building administrator at Chardon, my office was literally 50 feet away from where three students were killed 12 years ago. There in Chardon is no metal detectors, there are no book bag checks, they simply open the doors. The great thing about Shaker is that we continue to search for answers. We continue to search for how we can make our students stronger, safer, and better. I would just say to you, we probably need to look at the physical plant. When people tell us about all of the exits, they say we need to keep them open because there may be a fire. I would say to you that there is a greater chance today, sadly, of students being shot than there is of a fire.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus Wells.
You know, there really is, our students feel that those technological solutions, weapons detections, and that security in the buildings is important, but there's no technology or building feature that can't be worked around. I agree with my colleagues that have talked about the importance of belonging. That is a long-term project for the culture of the school. I think, you know, with our principal, Mr. Wyatt, at the high school, he is just doing some really amazing things in bringing those students in, identifying folks that may be distant. We need to reinforce that. But also, we need to be sure that, at the end of the day, when the school bell rings, those kids are still the same kids that are all of our community's responsibility. I think there's a lot of opportunity to broaden the way we look at youth beyond the walls of the building in collaboration with the city. There's kind of a gap where students and their recreation and after-school needs fall between the city and the library and the schools, and we really need to work and focus on how we can bring something together.
Thank you. Ms. Stedman.
Thanks. Going back to the part of the question that had to do for, was some, alternatives besides So like we keep saying up here, that so much of our world is not in school, and even if our school is a safe, welcoming place for our students, their home, or their community, or their job may not be. And what is the training we can have for staff, for teachers? What kind of services can we offer outside of school with those professionals, more of a wraparound service to help those kids that if they are, looks like they are going to be suspended or something is happening that is pushing them in that direction? What is it that we can do as a community, as a school community, to find what is causing that and how we can help support them in other parts of their lives?
Thank you. Ms. Holmes. Shaker Heights has a longstanding commitment to equity, but academic achievement gaps still persist across racial and socioeconomic lines. What specific policies and initiatives would you advocate to ensure that all students, regardless of background, have equal opportunities to succeed?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one time? I listen to you, my best listener.
Shaker has a longstanding commitment to equity, but academic achievement gaps still persist across racial and socioeconomic lines. What specific policies and initiatives would you advocate to ensure that all students, regardless of background, have equal opportunities to succeed?
Okay. So this is a big one for me because I am pro-equity. In this little less than 60 seconds, I would say, I think that bringing community together is very important. If we have parents more involved, I know that our staff and our administration could be more effective. Our attitudes have to change towards our children. The bar can't be on the floor. I've heard some things that let me know that our thinking about our students who have maybe socioeconomic struggles, they're kind of outdated. So we need to address those as a community and as a district. As far as specific policies, you kind of caught me off guard. But I would like to include data dashboards, and I always say I'd like to tie outcomes, our spending to outcomes. Transparency is a part of that with those dashboards. We'd be able to see where our dollars were going and making sure that they are tied to ensuring equity.
Thank you. Mr. Reed.
We have invested quite a number of resources into thinking about equity, and we know that we still have ways to go. Some of the things that we've done so far is investing in literacy specialists, in multi-tiered student support, in ensuring that our students were getting extra curriculum advantages. And obviously, the focus on pre-K is a significant focus on equity for the district if we can ensure that all of our kids are coming in kindergarten-ready. And we continue to see persistent gaps. There is no question that that is the case. And even though we have seen those start to close, they are still there, and we need to be working very hard again, hard to close them. And so some of the things that we're thinking of, can you think about, is what does the teaching and learning look like for our teachers? What does the support look like for them? How do we help them continue to do differentiated support in a way that's going to help all of our students?
When I was the principal here, when I was the principal here, I was that principal that was always in the halls, was always in classes. I did probably 20 classes a day. I thought there was nothing interesting happening in my office. I can tell you that at the high school, many of our classes do not look like our hallways. So I instituted a program and asked, worked with two of my AP teachers to address the achievement gap. I asked my counselors to give me the names and teachers of 25 students, minority students, that they thought could work at a higher level of academic rigor. I told them that what we wanted to do was institute a summer program where those students could get not only advanced curricular support, but community support, so that in the, when they moved into those honors classes in the fall, they would have a community that had already been established for them. That program was just started as I left. It's now called the Bridges Program.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus Wells.
I'm tremendously excited by the pre-K as a facility that's just down the street. I think that has enormous potential. We need to keep a close eye and make sure that's working as well as it can, and we may look for ways to expand that. I think starting early is the strongest solution that we can implement. Certainly, those data-driven approaches that were mentioned previously, where we look and make sure that we're getting kids the extra support that they might need are important. We need to balance that with the experience on the ground that the teachers have. And also make sure that we're expanding our look at inclusion to make sure that it's not also make sure that we're expanding our look at inclusion to make sure that it's not just in the classroom, but it's all those broader co-curricular experiences, the arts, athletics, that also don't always look like our schools. And then finally, I think we need to look at maybe some creative scheduling. Our teachers are under contract for a certain number of hours, but those hours don't always have to occur. It could be year-round hours. We could look at alternative schedules and allow that kind of scheduling to help meet the needs of students that aren't served by our traditional schedule now.
Thank you. Ms. Dedman?
Well, certainly with equity, the pre-K program that is so successful so far this school year, and the detracking are two of the big things that the district has done so far and the board has done so far to help the extra literacy in the K through three years is an absolute must. And one of the biggest things I want on the board, whenever we are making a decision, having a discussion about any policy, is ask those questions, is, does this meet our equity standard? And does this help close the achievement gap? And take every policy from that standpoint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a complex problem that requires a lot of different solutions to tackle it. But I think the closest thing we can get to a magic wand is equitable and really strong pre-K. We know that the achievement gap essentially starts at birth, and we have to start cutting it off and closing it as soon as we can. And that means pre-K, that means making sure that all families in the district who want it are able to access it, and that it is a strong program where kids are learning early, they're becoming part of the community, and they're getting their footing to be able to enter kindergarten ready to go. This has so many ripple effects. It's where they begin to learn, it's where they begin to read. We know that kids need to be able to read by third grade, or they're left behind. And that's not just a skill set, that's a belonging. If you can't read in seventh grade, you're going to be bored, you're not going to know how to engage. We have to start early to make sure to start closing those gaps when they're little. It will also save the district a lot of money. We can cut down on remediation if we're not spending money there and instead spend that money on helping kids in other areas where they need it, or enriching them and give them a really valuable, wonderful experience.
Thank you. Ms. Cover. There have been several cuts made to balance the Shaker Heights City School budget, including cuts to the staff, food service, and art program. Shaker Schools has a levy on the ballot this year to try to balance the problems. If the levy fails, where might you suggest that cuts be made in the district moving forward if the primary goal is to maintain a balanced student-teacher ratio?
It is true. We have found $2.5 million to help stem the tide of our budget. The part of us going out for the levy was also saying to the community that we are going to look for opportunities to bring down the budget. When I think about the decisions that we are making right now, the things we're thinking about are, is it attached to kids and learning? Is it supporting differentiated learning? And is it something that makes Shaker Shaker? Now, if we think about not passing this levy, we are talking about $12 million. About $100,000 per teacher is how we think about this. At that point, we are going to have to make cuts at all three of those places, which makes me very nervous. But I do think we need to continue to have that North Star, and also to be very clear with the community about what this might mean if we don't pass.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
I can only say that my support for the levy is total simply because I know that if we don't pass the levy this time, we will eventually have to pass a levy because of our state legislature, who does not really like public schools. I would only say to you this, the special things that we do here in Shaker, that I talked about earlier, the special things that happens in our classrooms, on our athletic fields, in our, all sorts of places, make our students special students. And the thing that really sets, when you talk about passing a levy, the thing that sets our students apart is that America and the world is changing at a rapid rate. I would submit to you that my four graduates, my four children who have graduated from Shaker, and your grandparents, kids, whoever, they don't see the world as a frightening place because of Shaker. And if we do that, there is nothing that is worth that price.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus Wells?
I have faith in my community that we will pass this levy. I absolutely urge you to do so. But if we come to that situation, what, and whether we come to that situation or some other challenge, whether it's state funding, or federal funding, or something unrelated to funding, when we have those big decisions that are facing our community, that's not just for the board to make. If we had something like that, we need to have our community involved deeply in that decision with a lot of conversation. We need to make sure we facilitate it from hearing from all corners of the community. And then, yes, the board is responsible for that decision, but, you know, if we come to that situation, we really need to hear what the community is ready to support.
Thank you. Ms. Dedman?
My colleagues up here have hit on a lot of really, really important parts, and I would like to add on and continue in talking about the social-emotional wellness of our community and of our students. And when I think about needing to cut services or cut staff, I will, I will die on the hill that our children need the extra professionals they need in this building in addition to the teachers. The people that have made my children's success, K through 12, have, they have been the teachers, but they have been the coaches, and the assistant principals, and the counselors, and the nurses. I can give really specific examples in almost every building, how those professionals have made my children enjoy coming to school, feel safe at school, feel supported and seen. And those, I would say, are the part of this community that I would fight for and worry about the most.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen?
I echo the sentiment that I believe in our community and our ability to pass this levy and support all of our students and our teachers. And I applaud the board for the work that they've already done before they put the levy on the ballot to look for, to cut $1.5 million each year to make reductions up to $15 million already. So, I want to point that out. That being said, when we look at our financial picture, I think that we need to make our finances align with our values and have strategic, long-term spending that's going to realize savings over time in line with what we already believe in. I already talked about pre-K. I will continue to talk about that over and over again. I think that that is a strategic, long-term investment. I also think that we really need to bring our community into how we think about providing services to our families. We all know that we have a vibrant community, so we need to think about what services our community can bring to our schools and rely on that. It serves so many different purposes and could realize savings over time as well.
Thank you.
Yes. So, if the levy were not to pass, my hope is that it would force our district to look at things that I have brought up, such as public face and dashboards, publishing, or actually having departmental budgets and KPIs that track where our dollars are going. I've brought up things like redirecting federal, more federal aid to early literacy specialists, trauma-informed training, intervention supports, and wraparounds. I do believe, and I've asked for the records, and I have not yet to receive them, that there will be opportunities to maybe trim between 8% and 10% of purchased services, which could save us some money, maybe like a million and a half. And these are just my projections, they're not science. We also have called to restructure admin and administrative support by 5%. And also, I've called for us to look into and possibly freeze travel and PR a little bit, so maybe we could save some money instead of having to cut teachers or take from our community.
Thank you. Mr. Reed? Vouchers. What is the impact of vouchers on the Shaker Schools and what can be done about it for Shaker to succeed?
Vouchers. Vouchers. As I told you, my experience has spanned, public and private. When I was the principal at St. Edward, there was just a very kind of beginning, elementary kind of voucher program occurring. I can tell you that I spent two years at St. Edward trying to convince the private school folks that we, public schools and private schools were really not on the same kind of basis. I couldn't convince them of that because they do think that they are the same. For a student to say, my, I'm better served by going to a private school, is really going to be kind of the death knell for, I think, most of this country because public schools are the lifeblood. It's the only place in Shaker that we touch each other, and we have to find ways to keep them alive and functioning.
Thank you.
Well, it's no secret that state policy is not the friend of what we are able to do very uniquely in Shaker and the very unique population we serve, and vouchers is not the only issue that we're facing from the state of Ohio. You know, in our special education programs too, we are unfunded to the tune of something like $13.5 million a year. There's a role for our community to play in coming together and supporting Shaker Schools and all those issues that are affected at the state level. But I think our best defense against vouchers, absent of major change in state policy, is just the unique experience that we offer in Shaker, a holistic, well-rounded, globally-focused education that is bringing new students to our community, bringing families to live in our community from all over the country who are uniquely attracted by what we offer here. So, we need to maintain that appeal of our schools to the broader world and make it clear that what we offer is something you can't find in another school.
Thank you.
So, yeah, vouchers are another way that our state government has decided to take money from our communities and put it into private schooling. The problem is, is that those schools can say, no, not you. You don't get to come here, even if you can get a voucher. And that's the beauty of public schools, is that not only won't they turn you away, they don't want to turn you away. They want an inclusive school, and Shaker is just, I mean, maybe we're probably all biased, but the special of the most special of public school systems. And we need to continue to move Shaker forward, continue to show the community what we have. It's part of wanting to be a better communicator and be more transparent in our community so we can say, like, not only are you welcome here at Shaker, but you are wanted here and supported here.
Thank you.
Vouchers are part of a larger agenda to defund public education. It has ripple effects. We've seen it. We're going to continue to see it. It saps the, what makes our community so rich. It affects our democracy. It affects good government. As part of a larger plan, we need to advocate against it, and we need, as many of my colleagues have said, to continue to provide such a rich education that people want to come here and be a part of the special thing that we are doing. It matters. It matters so very much, and I am proud to be a part of it. I also think that, that we're seeing some of the data, that families who have the opportunity to get a voucher can leave our schools, but we're not seeing huge drop-offs with the increase of vouchers. So, those families who want to be here are staying here. So, the vouchers are just going to support families that have already decided not to be part of our public schools, which just further emphasizes the point that it's sapping a great public education to support those who already have a different education.
Thank you.
I echo those sentiments. One thing that is very special and important is just that sense of Shaker pride. My students have been here, all of my students have been here since kindergarten. I have four children, and I have a senior. And so many of their teachers, my friends, they are, they've been here, they went here. I have friends, three generations, four generations, six generations. I don't know how that's possible. That's what somebody told me. So, we love our community. I think by reinvesting and making sure that everyone wants to stay. When we talk about data, we just kind of went over that at the, at the board meeting. They were talking about new enrollment. We are taking in more diverse students. Let's make sure that they are having amazing experience so that they want to stay. Let's make sure everyone wants to stay.
Thank you. Ms. Cover?
It all makes sense if we start with the premise that the state hates public education, and then everything else comes from that. It is absolutely a strategy to try to end public education in our state, which is really fascinating, given that 90% of our kids are in public schools, and there is no plans for what they're going to actually do to support kids, except to give them vouchers where there may or may not be a school building near them. We are, as a community, Shaker is part of a lawsuit that is working against the vouchers. It's something that the board voted on because we felt so strongly about this. You'll see testimony and letters to the editor, et cetera, that we are sending because it is really important that we continue to protect public education, not just for us, but for the entire state, because it does have effects on the entire democracy for us. And then finally, I have gotten to go to a bunch of block parties over the summer, and one thing that I have heard from a few different people is their decision to come back from private schools to our schools, which I think also is a good reminder that we have a lot to offer.
All right, we have one final, very quick, pie in the sky, if you can dream question, like 15 seconds max. If you could change one specific thing that would serve our children better at Shaker, what would it be? Let's start at the other end with Mr. Reed.
I think I would, if there was one thing that I could wish for, for every school, I would wish that students come to us prepared to do the work that we're asking for them to do. I've been in too many situations where the work that we've asked students to prepare for, there are deficits in that area. And so, we have to spend more time trying to cover those deficits.
Thank you. Pie in the sky. Ms. Cover?
I was in the high school today, and I asked a bunch of seniors this question too, but theirs was really about food and cellphones. I, for me, I would say, I would love to have the resources that we need to truly have differentiated education, so that we could have the kinds of spaces where kids could be learning in very, very different ways throughout their entire time. We do pieces of that here, for sure, and they're really important pathways. But the idea that, like, we could have kids on a farm over there, we could have kids that are building a rocket ship over there, I feel like would be amazing.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes?
I just would like us to have a community that feels like a connected community. I would like our parents to feel more engaged, feel more heard. I think if we really just bring our community together into our children's education, into what we are building, everything would go a lot smoother.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen?
Echoing a little bit, but the resources to support teachers fully in every way that they need and to have as many as we could possibly dream of. I think it would be wonderful to support the differentiated learning that Laura is talking about, and have multiple teachers in every classroom to support learners at different levels and to collaborate with each other so they can learn together and from one another and help students at every level that they need.
Thank you. Ms. Dedman?
I mean, pie in the sky would be all the money in the world to give every student everything they need, whether it's, you know, the funds they need to play a sport, or a paraprofessional for the day if they needed, if not the whole school year, every training and every tool a teacher needs to allow, to help a student learn, help a student feel safe. The, I just feel like it's endless, but resources, pie in the sky would be resources.
Thank you. Mr. Dreyfus Wells?
I know we've got a lot of tough challenges, and some of them we're just going to have to work at. So, with the pie in the sky magic wand, I would really expand to make our pre-K program truly a universal free pre-K for every child in the district, and with any magic wand power to expand that support, starting with the youngest levels, because that's really where we need to make the difference in the achievement gap, is starting early in children's lives so that we, when we get to later on, we've got a much more level playing field.
Thank you. And this leads us to closing statements, your one-minute closing statements in reverse order from the opening statements. So, Mr. Reed, do you have a closing statement?
My closing statement is very short. I, as I told you, I've been in Shaker resident for 62 years. My four children all graduated from here, as I did. They were a... They were a wide range of abilities from IEPs to Yale. And they are always a pleasure for me to talk to about the experience that they had here in the Shaker schools. They went all the way through. So I really have no axe to grind. I have no political aspirations. I want to be able to help the community that has given me and my family so much for all of these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cover.
Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, Wendy, our moderator, and thank you all for being here tonight. These conversations matter because the schools are the heart of Shaker. I'm proud of what we've accomplished. The capital campaign to modernize every K building, expanding pre-K, putting goals in place so we hold ourselves accountable to results, advancing policies that balance excellence with equity, like moving fifth grade back into elementary schools and setting high expectations for all students. But the work isn't done. We're navigating rising costs and flat revenues. We must ensure high expectations and results for all of our students. And we need to keep building schools where every child feels they belong and can achieve at the highest level. It has been an honor to serve on the board these last four years, serving our schools, our community, the place where both of my kids graduated, and our students. I respectfully am asking for your vote to do this work for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Holmes.
What Laura said, I would like to thank everybody for coming out and listening to us. I'm grateful for the opportunity. It is important for me to be here to just make sure that every side of the story is heard, to make sure that parents are heard, our special education students and parents to feel represented, all of our students, all of our community, our taxpayers who don't have children in the district. I want them to know that they belong in this conversation with us moving forward as well. And most importantly, I just want our students to really enjoy being here. I want them to keep coming back. And I just want our community to continue to thrive. And again, I just want to say thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. Ms. Nielsen.
Well, thank you, Wendy, and thank you to the League and candidates and for all of you for being here and for your deep engagement. The magical thing about Shaker isn't that we all think the same way, but that we all are deeply devoted to making our kids and our schools successful. I want to live in a world where the next generation of leaders is exposed to a broad diversity of people and perspectives, where they have the basic skills they need plus enriching opportunities that make them interesting, kind, and creative thinkers. Shaker schools are able to nurture these kinds of learners and I want to be part of the team that fulfills that vision. You heard a lot tonight. There are many commonalities and some differences in our points of view on how we move forward. But I hope when you consider me as a candidate, you think about me as a dedicated mom and a proud alum who's here for the long haul and has the policy and advocacy skills to make a difference. My kids will be in Shaker for the next 15 years. Let's go together. I humbly ask for both your vote and your partnership in this journey.
Thank you. Ms. Stedman.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and you as well, Wendy, and all of you here. Just the camaraderie amongst this group has just been absolutely amazing here and out on the campaign. And for all of you, local elections matter more than anything and I'm so glad that you took time to come here tonight. And Shaker has always led the way with inclusion, innovation, and excellence, but it does not happen by accident. It happens when people show up. Look at all of you here, when we work together and keep our focus where it belongs, on the kids, on the classrooms, and here in the community. And if you believe like I do that every family deserves to be heard and every child deserves to thrive, I hope you'll join me. Together, we can keep Shaker schools strong and moving forward. I hope I've earned your trust tonight and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Dreyfus Wells.
Thank you so much to the League. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to my fellow candidates. I'm going to take a brief detour from my prepared remarks because we didn't talk about what is the largest public investment that we will see in our lifetimes, which is our facilities plan. It's 188 million before we even get to the high school. We have our first project in that be three months behind and counting. We need to desperately focus on the project management of that. That's how we make that succeed and it's important we get it right. I'm committed to represent all of this community, all backgrounds, all families, and I'm a candidate that knows this community through my service experience, through my family experience in the schools. And I know how to be effective in government in a board role and that's, I can be demonstrated by the broad range of endorsements I've had from our current and former mayor and any number of current and former city and school council people. I am committed to engaging all of you in the process of decision-making. As I say, our solutions are better when the people affected are part of them. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our time for the school board candidates. We apologize sincerely that we were unable to ask all of the questions. You may have seen me sorting through cards up here, trying desperately to figure out which to ask. Candidates, we thank you very much for being here. It wouldn't be the same without you. If you have additional questions for the candidates, you're free to talk to them out in the lobby, please. And give us a couple of minutes to reset the stage for the forum on the school levy. Reminder that please do not use any clips, post any clips from this evening. The entire program will be posted in its entirety on the League's website. If you go to vote in person, early voting has already started. Please know that the Board of Elections has moved to 1803 Superior Road. And being a local election and me being a poll worker, I frankly urge everyone to go vote in person if you can that day because it's a really long day and we'd love to see people. So, but vote, one way or the other, just wherever you can vote. Thank you very much. Let's reset the stage. Any seat will be beginning momentarily. And I'm sure this information is important to you. Please make your way to your seats so the program can begin again. Are we ready to begin?
To my Christmas hands.
If everyone would please make their way to their seats, we are ready to begin again.
I'm Wendy Durrin, your moderator for the evening, still. Turning now to an issue on the ballot for Shaker voters, whether to approve a 0.9 mil levy for operations of the Shaker Heights City School District. Following a presentation, we will pose some League questions and then audience questions. Once again, if you have a question you would like to present, please raise your hand and a card will be given to you or picked up from you. Presenting tonight are Caitlin Johnson and Erin Stockdale, co-chairs for the levy campaign.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. There you go. There's our yard sign, if you haven't seen one. There it is. And I'm Caitlin Johnson.
I'm Erin Stockdale.
We are your co-chairs. First, before we get into the details about the levy, we want to tell you about why we are spending our nights and weekends working on this campaign. These are our whys. Those handsome boys over there, that's my stepson Owen. He graduated in 2024 and he came from St. Dominics, actually, which is a great school. But my husband and Owen's mom thought the public school, the high school, would be the best opportunities for him. He came during COVID. Came, he came during the COVID year, so ninth grade was kind of tough, but he joined the crew team and he just found his people and he's thriving. And now he's rowing at Holy Cross College in Worcester. My son, John, is a second grader at Mercer. He is on an IEP. Kindergarten was kind of rough, but he has speech therapist, he has OT, he has reading intervention, and he is thriving in Miss Degrees class in Mercer. Unbelievable growth. And so I know what kind of changes this district can make for kids.
So my why, as you see up there, is my beautiful daughter Gabby, who's looking embarrassed right now. She is an eighth grader at Shaker Heights Middle School. Our family moved to Shaker in 2023. And since we came to Shaker, we just feel like we have been completely embraced by
And we both have. I came here in 2019 and moved into Peter John's old house. Actually, he was the middle school principal. And really, the reason we even got that house is because we wrote a letter and said, hey, my stepchildren, my stepdaughter at the time was at the high school and said, we are committed to sending my son to public schools. And a lot of other bids were in that school. And Peter John said, okay, you guys can get that, you guys can buy our house. So here we are, two PTO moms who are spending our time working on this campaign. So why does the district need this levy? We'll get into those details now. So as you heard some of the board members talk about, the big reason that we are here, the big reason many school districts need to pass levies is because of HB 920. Don't want to get into all the boring details of this law, but a law that was passed in the 1970s during a period of very high inflation, similar to the one that we're experiencing now. It was passed in order to prevent property values from rising and really kind of putting, penalizing property owners too harshly. So it caps, when a levy is passed, if it's passed in 1992, a levy is still collecting money like it's 1992. But expenses are growing. Cost of inflation, we all know about eggs, we all know about healthcare, those expenses are rising. So that's what the district is dealing with. We had our last operating levy in 2014. We all know what inflation has done. We all know what costs have been like since 2014. So because of that, we are facing a deficit. Revenues are going to exceed costs. Revenues are exceeding costs by $13 million. It is time for the district to go back to voters and ask them to pass a levy, which actually is a typical thing that many districts in Ohio have to do. And a typical levy cycle is actually about three years or so. So if we aren't able to pass this levy, we're going to face some pretty serious consequences that school board members alluded to. We're going to be looking at probably having to cut some staff because operating costs, it's an operating levy, so that means 80% of cut some staff because operating costs, it's an operating levy, so that means 80% of operating costs go to staff. So we're looking at losing staff, we're looking at bigger class sizes, we're looking at perhaps pay to play, losing programs, a lot of things that I don't think anybody else, anybody wants to really deal with. Anything you want to add to that, Erin? All right. And if we aren't able to pass this levy in this year, we are going to have to face immediate cuts next year because when you pass a levy in November, you start collecting the very next year. So if we don't pass the levy in 2025, the cuts would have to be made in 2026. All right. So Erin actually has a background in auditing. So she started looking at some of the numbers for us. I'm a communications person and a policy person, that's what I do. But Erin actually dug into the numbers and looked at the revenue. And so maybe this is a U slide, I believe.
So the key takeaway from this slide is that inflation has been outpacing what the school district is bringing in financially or bringing in through revenue. And so what you'll see is basically the revenue that the district is bringing in has been relatively flat, but inflation has risen drastically, especially since 2019.
Another question that we get a lot when we're out in the community was alluded to at the, during the board conversation. We just had a levy. We just all passed this levy in 2023. We're paying more now. Why do we have to pay again? Well, in 2023, we passed a levy for a massive capital project. That was to rebuild the middle years building, tore down Woodbury. We're rebuilding that now, going through the process. We've re-banded our elementary schools, we're renovating them. And then there was a small earmark for Ludlow pre-K. Different bucket of money, those buckets do not co-mingle. Operating is for the day-to-day expenses of a school, like I said, mostly staff. So these are different things. That doesn't necessarily make it easier on us as taxpayers, and we know that. But just so everyone understands, these are two different buckets of money that the district is dealing with. And we also just want to make sure everyone understands that we're paying for a good product. This is a good district. Now, we can talk about the state report card. And Shaker got a good state report card. It's four stars. That means it exceeds state standards. If that is a measure that's important to you. There are lots of studies that show that those measurements are correlated with socioeconomics, and it's not necessarily related to the quality of education that a student receives, right? But by those measures, our district is performing. There are places that we do need to improve. And I watched the last school board work session on September 16th, and I heard board members holding our district officials accountable, and I heard our district administrators being very transparent. That's what I heard as a parent, and I felt good about that. We can all feel good about the district's performance by these quote unquote so-called, I wouldn't call them objective, but these standards that we have. And Erin, this is a U data slide that you did.
So with this slide, what I did was I compared Shaker to six nearby districts. And what we see here is that Shaker is the second highest with regard to the number of teachers that have master's degrees. We're at 86%. Only second to, I believe it's orange, with they have 89%. We are also the second, we're tied in second for the smallest class sizes. So we presently have 17 students per teacher. We're second to Beechwood, and we're tied with Warrensville Heights. And I think it's orange again for second.
And again, as I mentioned before, our district, I think as was said during the board portion, and I think it was said really eloquently by Mr. Reed, that Shaker is always searching. It's always searching for answers. It's always striving. And if there are things that we're not doing perfectly, and I think we can look at some of the metrics and see there are places we need to improve, that we're trying, the district is trying, and I feel good about that. And here are some of the ways that the district is trying. There's pre-K at Ludlow. There is the multi-tiered systems of support, which I got a letter for my son. He's in the multi-tiered system. That means we're going to be, he's going to be getting extra support for reading. These are ways that the district is working to close the achievement gap. Want to go through this quickly? I have five minutes. But we talked about this during the board meeting as well. $3 billion underfunding for state, from the state for public education. The Trump budget wants to cut $3 billion for public education. $283 million for Ohio public schools, almost 800,000 for Shaker in particular. The threats are coming from the state and from the federal government. We cannot look to them to save us. If we want to make sure our kids have a good education, it's really up to us. Sadly, it is up to us to make sure it happens.
So what this slide is showing us here is that Shaker, two-thirds of Shaker's revenue is from local taxpayers. About a quarter is from the state, and roughly, it's a little under 10% that is from the federal government. As was discussed in the previous meeting with the people running for board, we are experiencing a lot of uncertainty with regard to what we're going to be receiving from the state and the federal government moving forward. The five-year financial forecast, which Caitlin has hit on this, we are currently running a $13 million deficit each year. And I think a big thing about this, and we, the treasurer was discussing this very thing at a meeting I was at, and it's that without any cuts to our budget, or if we don't pass the levy, ultimately, our general fund will be at a balance, a negative balance by June 2027. So what that means is if we don't pass the levy, we will have to make significant cuts beginning in January of 2026. Recognizing this, the district has already started making cuts. Their plan was to cut $1 million beginning this year. They've actually identified $2.5 million worth of cuts, and they will continue making a million-dollar cut each year for the next five years, and that will add up to a total of $15 million. And I, oh, go back. I forgot one thing. And some of the ways, too, that the district is looking at ways to cut cost is they are looking at reducing staff currently by 31 positions, and that's through natural attrition. So that's by retirements and resignations. And they're also doing the other things that are up there. So some of, part of what Shaker is experiencing funding-wise and the challenges they're experiencing is the direct result of the fact that Shaker doesn't have as robust of a commercial base as some of the surrounding communities. So this chart is showing that Shaker relies, about 90% of our revenue is from the local property taxpayers. Whereas somewhere like Warrensville Heights on the other end, they have a really big commercial tax base. I think it's probably because of the Rancino or the Racino. So, but that means that unfortunately, when we have to come and request the community to vote for a levy, it is up to the local taxpayer, the local property owners.
We have one minute left. Yep. So wanted to go to this part because it's very important. Everyone wants to know this. How much will it cost you? $29 a month per $100,000 of property value. Average home in Shaker is about $350,000. But it's going to ensure that our schools are going to continue to be able to offer the things that we all value so much. Strong schools, strong communities. Schools are the anchors of our neighborhoods. They keep our property values strong. They bring our city together. So please consider supporting Issue 51.
Questions? Hopefully, we'll cover some of what you have to skip there in the questions. We who read The Plain Dealer have been reading about changes from the state in what kinds of levies will be allowed. Is this levy part of what is being impacted by the state changes?
No, this levy is not one of the levies that will be impacted by this, what the state has done. The state just recently outlawed, I believe, replacement levies and emergency levies, maybe another kind. But I think what's important to remember is that that is just kind of like, that was their easy pickings. That was their easy pickings. There were a number of attempts in this last state budget by our lawmakers to find ways to cut school districts off at the knees, to handcuff them further while they were starving our school districts of the state funds they need. They want to starve us of the state funds that we need and then cut us off at the knees locally. And this is just another way to do this. Now, this was an easy picking one because they know replacement levies, emergency levies, that's kind of confusing. So we'll, we'll go for those. But they're going to come for more. They have something that they want to do right now, that they want to allow the county boards to, I have some of them, have some of it right here. They want to allow county boards to actually overturn voted levies. That's something that they want to do. That would be, not, not only is that taking away funds from school districts, that's overturning the will of the people. So this is, I, I don't quite know how to put into words just how much public education is under assault. Like, I, I don't quite know. If you, if you can't see it in my voice, if you can't tell how upset I am about what's happening, like, please listen, like, I'm, it's serious. That is why this levy is so serious. That particular item will not affect us directly. But make no mistake, more things are coming.
I was also just going to add that we are significantly already impacted by legislation that has gone through. I mean, we discussed it, and we can discuss it at length, but House Bill 920 kills public schools. And the fact that we essentially have to come to the community anytime the school needs more money, it puts, I mean, for Caitlin and I, like, we don't want to have to do this. We, we don't, we get, having property taxes raised is not good. Like, none of us want that. But this is what Ohio has done. And I think it started with House Bill 920.
There are also changes in the federal government, as you mentioned briefly. How specifically is Shaker impacted by the changes in the Ohio, the, sorry, the Federal Board of what, Department of Education?
So I don't know all of the specific details, and I think that would be something we'd probably have to check with the district about. I do know, what I have been tracking more closely, just for some other work that I'm doing, is what's happening with the budget proposal. You know, the government is shut down. We know that. And one of the proposals in that budget that is under debate is the proposal to cut public education funding. What, if it's K through 12, it would be cut by $6 billion. If you count pre-K to higher ed, it's a six, it's a $12 billion cut. The cut for Ohio would be 283 million. And then there's a toolkit, it's called, it's under the Education Law Center, you can check it, you can put in your district. It shows that if you put in Shaker Heights, it's 760-some-odd thousand dollars would be, Shaker Heights would lose if you put in. So they have a calculator, and they say how many first-year teachers or how many Chromebooks that would be. I don't know how accurate that is, but I know that $760,000 adds up to a lot of stuff. And we, again, with the, with the lack of staffing and just the taking away people in the Department of Education, just getting money out the door, getting funds out the door, that just isn't happening the way it used to happen. And hey, we have, what, Title I school here, Lowndes is a Title I school. I believe the middle school, your, your PTO middle school. So I believe middle school is partially Title I and Boulevard, I believe, also. So Title I funds are under threat from the Trump administration. So that is also a huge concern for us.
Well, all funds are a threat under the Trump administration. I mean, I think also one of the big things, important things here, and that's important to Shaker and what we do as a school district, is, you know, Trump's wanting to take money away from schools that want to continue policies that continue diversity, equity, inclusion. And I'm proud that Shaker has continued to take a stance that says, no, this is important. It's important for what our student body looks like. It's important for what our community looks like. And I think we have to recognize, though, as a community and in taking that stance, we may have more funds taken away from us. And we need to be willing to step up as a community if that is the case.
Have you looked at other local public schools and what they are doing to combat funding cuts without causing our taxes, without raising our taxes again?
I'm sorry.
Have you looked at other local public schools and what they are doing to combat funding cuts without raising taxes?
Have we? Well, well, we personally haven't. But I, I will say this, that sometimes in education, it's really hard to compare one district to another. We're all separate, like, ecosystems. And just like some of the data that I was showing, Shaker's community is different in that, you know, we don't have as much of a commercial tax base. Um, so I think that, you know, it's really hard to say, like, well, this district here can make a cut here, and that cut may not make sense for Shaker. I think what is important is these are conversations that we have as community. And I also, that we both hope that that's not a conversation we're having.
And I also just want to note, it is very unfair to us as taxpayers. It's unfair to school districts. But unfortunately, levies are how we have to get it done in Ohio. Since HB 920 was passed in 1976, and the latest year I have data for, 2023, there were 18,500 school levies. There are about one-third of districts are on the ballot every year. This is, it's, it's exhausting. But this is not a unique thing that Shaker is doing by going to voters and asking for funding. It's an inflation adjustment, is what the district is asking for, to keep up with the rising expenses that the school district is grappling with. This is not a unique thing. It's, it's hard on us, but it is not an unheard-of thing.
Do you know how much money is taken away from the Shaker schools by the universal voucher program?
Oh, that's a good question. I do not know, but I believe that Policy Matters Ohio has data on this. And I think also Honesty for Ohio Education may track this.
Was Honesty for Ohio?
Honesty for Ohio Education may track this.
Okay. Given that the last levy in 2014 raised $5.3 million annually on $90 million in total annual funding, which would be roughly $125 million in today's dollars. annual funding, which would be roughly $125 million in today's dollars with inflation, and that our operating expenses are around $120 million now, isn't this proposed levy of $10.5 million essentially just keeping pace with the inflation under our HB 920 regime rather than a real increase in funding?
Yes. So that's the crux of all of this, is we're not asking, you know, it's not funding to provide anything other than what we have. This is just keeping our schools with what we have. There's not, it's not, there's not going to be extras or anything. It's just continuing what we're doing, and it's simply because of inflation over the last 11 years.
I had another question here, but that was going to lead to the same answer. So moving on. So this will bring in essentially approximately the same level of revenue. Do you know if there is a plan in the schools to shift how that money is allocated out? Or is it basically trying to continue as they are currently?
I would say that I would think that would be more of a school board question and not necessarily a two PTO moms type of question. Yeah, that's above our pay. Yeah, not that the board makes money, but.
I think what I was hearing, you know, going back and again, looking at, in preparation for this meeting, I was making sure to go back and watch some board meetings and, and look at some work sessions. I think the board and the district are always looking at how they should be shifting resources based on what's working, what's not. And that seems like that's going to be something that's going to be done regardless. I think the idea is if we have issues that need to be addressed, we will not be able to, or the district, I should say the district, not we, because we are not the district. We are volunteers. Campaign is very different than the district. The district will not be able to do it as well if it doesn't have the resources it needs. And that is just, that is the crux of the issue.
If the levy passes and funding is then also cut from the state budget and federal budget, what year would cuts have to start anyways?
That's a lot of what-ifs.
Yeah.
And I hope we don't have to consider those. But I think, you know, unfortunately, if that were to happen, we're going to have to have another levy. Like, that's the predicament we're in. And there's no other easy way to answer that.
And I think it depends on the amount of the cuts and what the cuts are for, and, and there are so many other things to consider. One of the reasons that we were able to go all these years without a levy, you know, the district did a good job of managing the money it had, but there was also very low inflation. There was also COVID relief funds. So it's hard to say what is going to happen. I think, though, understanding that an 11-year timeframe of no levy is a very unusual thing. It's unusual, I want to say unusual in a kind of larger sense, because other districts were able to go a long time, too, because of those circumstances that I, that I laid out. But there will be other levies because this is how we have to fund schools in Ohio. If there are cuts from the state or the federal government, that may mean the levy comes sooner. But there also may be other changing circumstances. Maybe inflation gets better. You know, who knows? But things may change. It's hard to, that's why the five-year forecast is a planning document, and it's not set in stone.
I don't know if you have an answer to this. How does the district lobby the state legislators? Does the district lobby directly?
So I don't, I can't speak for the district. I can say, as a person who works in policy and does a lot of work at the state level around school funding, when I have asked members of the school board to engage, sign letters, you know, be advocates for things like the Fair School Funding Plan, they have joined. There are other things that are available. There's, you know, there's different affinity groups, like there's OASBO. Oh, gosh, what does that stand for? Ohio Association of Business. I'm looking at Kevin over there. You know, business officials, yeah. And then there's the School Board Association. There's other groups that, and then Honesty for Ohio Education has a school board member group. There are lots of different organizations, and I think some of Shaker's board members are a part of that as well.
And I think, when I think that it came up in the last meeting as well, where they were talking about the stance that the district has taken with regard to the vouchers. They've signed on with other school districts in Ohio.
Yeah.
And what are the district's options if the levy does not pass?
Do we have to talk about that? Not, not anything I think we want to think about. But I think the bottom line is when 80% of your costs are people, our people are going to take a hit. And I think that's who we're protecting.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's, there's only one way I know how to deal with, if you have a deficit, you have to raise money or you have to make cuts. And if we can't raise the money, I don't see another way. I'm no financial wizard, but that's all I know.
We need a financial wizard, is what we need. That's all of the questions that I have. Do you have, in essence, a closing statement, or would you like to make a final pitch?
Sure. Make a closing statement. I think Erin and I have really enjoyed working on this campaign. It's, it's been hard work, and we, you know, it's been great to get to know each other and so many other really wonderful people in the community. I think I've gotten to know more about Shaker Heights in just a few months than I got to know in five years of living here. But I am more convinced than ever that this was the right move. I'm so glad that we came here. I am so glad that my son is in school here. And so many of the things that were said about, yeah, this is an empathy machine. That's what the school district is. It's an empathy machine. And I saw it with my stepchildren. They understand the world. They know so much more than I ever did at their age. And that's why I wanted to move here. I wanted that for my son. And that's, there aren't many places, I didn't grow up like that. And I want to make sure that we can keep that. And the school is what makes this community. It's the anchor of this community, so we need to protect it. So I really hope everyone can join us in standing up for our kids and standing up for our schools. So thank you so much for having us, and we really appreciate it.
I was just going to add, sorry, that I think one of the things that amazes me about Shaker as a community is that this community shows up, and it shows up for our kids, and it shows up in this, you know, for its schools. And I grew up in a community that always had strong schools. And that started to change when we couldn't get levies passed. And I've watched that district not be what it used to be. And so I think what just amazes me about Shaker is just the people and that we, we get it done. We get it done. We find a way. And I think that's what Caitlin and I are asking of all of you.
This concludes our joint candidates. This concludes our joint candidates and levy forums this evening. Thank you to all of the community leaders who participated tonight. Your community appreciates the perspectives and energies you contribute. Merrill.
Very quickly, thank you to all our volunteers tonight, to the candidates and the presenters for making this evening possible. We thank the Shaker schools and their excellent staff for letting us use this space. The work that the League does is based possible by member dues and donations and dedicated League volunteers. If you're not a member, we encourage you to join. The video recording for tonight's forum and last night's forum will be posted by tomorrow on our YouTube channel. It's LWV Greater Cleveland, and there'll be a link on our website, lvwgreatercleveland.org. Thank you all for attending. Good night.